All right, six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. I want to remind everybody about chatter. Get on the audience to be able to hear, including the people that aren't here. So we'll start with the pledge.
The flag of the United States of America and to three public for which stands one nation of our God, innocent, liberty and justice for all.
And reviewing this over the minutes of December fifteenth. So more than second, many further discussions, seeing none, all in favor, that's everyone. Members reports, we'll start with Lindsay.
I just wanted to thank Public Works for going out and directing measures that were having on River Road. They spent a ton of time out there moving all of that sand and silt from the river because I'm guessing that main DOT didn't come out. So everyone who passes on that road, thank you for doing that and doing a great job and getting that done.
I have one thing about the chaos on the bridge. About stopping traffic on the bridge. I wasn't there. Don't know what happened. But there was a couple of upset individuals. Give a brief reason of how that went down or?
Uh, we can under, I'll take it under my report. Rob, all good. Kelsey.
I got a call from the hospice of Somerset County volunteers and they think that's for their donation.
And nothing from me, so we will dive right in. All right, so I will take that one off the top of the bridge and I'll try to be brief and that is once again, we called DOT with no response. We called county emergency management and they said, do what you need to do. So a DOT guy came by, there were concerns about the water coming up and the stability of the bridge on the from the south or on the heading north. The south. South May, the pine and wire support appeared they could be compromised. You could see a curve in the rail. None of us are bridge architects or engineers. And so with the lack of support that we had from qualified agencies, that one DOT person that was there for about three minutes said, my boss said, go ahead and shut it down. So the decision was made, we had fire on the scene, we had, but we had multiple fire units there, five personal vehicle. I was there, Matt was there. And what happened was we allowed traffic to work through. We came brought barricades into the lane and then personnel went across with flashing lights. And everybody kept on the south side of the road. So we started going north and we closed headed south. Got on the south side, barricaded with barricades and vehicles. And it was done. We had no issues on the south side of the bridge. Behind the flashing lights and the barricade, after the barricades were set, came a line of vehicles that pushed a barricade and then all came in behind thinking that they were going to be an exception. And that was not the case. And so they were held there, they became confrontational. They threatened numerous employees. They threatened life. They threatened assault. They threatened to steal vehicles, public and private vehicles. Law enforcement was called. Law enforcement handled it. I ended up pressing charges on somebody after they had on several occasions threatened to kill me. They also threatened to assault one of our firefighters and throw them off a bridge. And it was all because they were stuck on the bridge and the situation wasn't what they thought. So there are recordings of.
I got an email and it was.
They were overly entitled to cross the bridge.
Were they stuck on?
No, no.
They went around a barricade.
They went around two barricades.
I guess that was the.
Right, they went around two barricades and then they tried to get around the vehicles that were then blocked on the other side. They went so far as to try to hit a fire truck. One of them tried to get into a fire truck, one tried to get into a firefighter's personal vehicle to move them. And then when we did let somebody through, there was a medical emergency or somebody got caught in the middle of it. Those are the consequences that people don't understand. We made them able to get out and around it. When that happened, one of the folks that was being confrontational then stepped physically to obstruct an emergency vehicle. And we were able to maneuver around to keep them from going. But there were five or six individuals that inflamed the crowd. And it wasn't until law enforcement came that it went south. And I can tell you that our staff, we were, I instructed them back to do not engage and they kept getting the same repetitious lines out of me. And that was the, if they needed to do a ten point turn to get back around the other side of the bridge, that's what they needed to do.
So there was two barricades on both sides of the bridge?
They were in both full travel lanes and they were moved by these people on the way to get through. I have included in your on your binder today was a draft election reminder. That was something that Lindsay had suggested. That with everything going on, I think it was Lindsay. In March, we've got the back to back elections on Monday, Tuesday, town meeting and the presidential primary. So I drafted that in your pack. Let me know what you think. Ideally, we're going to print these up, send them every door direct mail, which will catch some people in Mercer too, but it's obviously the most cost effective way to do it. We've got a bitly link, which is a shortened link that will direct them right to the online absentee request. Delayed.
When, what's the timeframe when this goes out? You're waiting?
I am waiting because nobody else can hear online if want to record it. So the timeline for me, I have asked printers as I'm going off of pricing, the last week of January, which is the thirty first is a Monday. So that gets it coupled up the absentee with the reminder.
Okay.
That's kind of the concept behind this is that if we wait until right before, then we're not given the opportunity to absentee. So it's kind of the double, the double wham there. So it's looking like it'll be eight hundred to a thousand, but I don't have those numbers nailed down yet. So you can request absentee ballots now for both of those elections, but they're not available as of yet. Monday, the fifteenth is Martin Luther King Day, so the office will be closed. Planning board will meet next Thursday at six o'clock. Tiff Committee will meet Tuesday, the twenty third. They, their survey is live online about opportunities for what folks see in the communities as well as business attraction. I'm working on a second survey to run about specific to businesses, what would businesses like to see to enhance the environment as opposed to consumers and businesses? That seems to be going pretty well. After this got ran off today, I had another conversation with Christian Savage at Somerset Economic Development Corporation. And he's going to be attending the next Tiff Committee meeting to discuss revolving loan fund opportunities, which is loan interest loans. It could be available. It's a bucket of qualified allocation in the Tiff. And the committee has asked me to coordinate something so they could learn more about it. So he's going to be provided in that presentation. He's going to be a little late, so probably five thirty for that meeting. The, one of the CDs that's going to favor is matured on December twenty eighth. That was a nine month at four percent. So we were able to roll it over despite the rate announcement they were willing to commit again to five twenty five, which is what we got last time. So we took that one million plus the thirty thousand five ninety four that we earned in that nine month period and we're rolling that into a five month at five and a quarter. So trying to continue to make that money work. The wings on unpaid twenty one real estate taxes, they're still subject to automatic foreclosure on February the fourth. And after the twenty fourth, all funds will have to be certified. So no checks and no credit cards after that. But the committee is scheduled to meet again, they met last night. In a lengthy one, Monday night, the eighth at six o'clock if necessary, Tuesday night at five o'clock. So there's back to back meetings there. Library trustees are January eighteenth at three thirty. File an insurance claim, which is even FEMA does assist us. They require will file a claim. That's on the new building in Sula Park. Met with claims adjuster last Friday. Everything's been documented. I expect to hear on the final determination next week. But it looks like everything's going to be covered less a thousand dollar deductible. So including mountains. So I've kind of gone through that. There's going to be some stuff that's just, it is what it is and and we're not going to go for extra on the insurance company, but it looks like they're going to cover all of that. So looking to see that come through hopefully for the next meeting, I'll have some more. Chief Pino officially took the helm of the fire department on the first. And Darrell Wyman, the new administrator formally started today. Today was his first day in the office, getting appointed and whatnot. So that was good to see him. Thanks for that. Congratulations. Thank you to Todd once again. A lot of positive feedback on you. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
The, it does appear that there is a disaster declaration coming for us in terms of FEMA mema relief. So we're acting like there's a project and we're collecting information like that. So there are a couple bills in tonight that we're going to be holding into that. We're tracking man hours and whatnot associated with that. And then when and if the time comes, we'll file there. Target is ninety five percent reimbursement, ninety coming from the federal, five coming from the state, and then we're responsible for five percent. Which will ideally be covered by the many volunteer hours that the folks at the shelter contributed. Those are all bankable hours to cover our local shares. So we're actually raw dollar pull. But we'll keep you posted on that as well. Executive Director of the Red Cross of Northern and Eastern Maine, she extended her thanks to the town of Nordwalk and their volunteers for taking the lead and supporting the extra area during the storm. And and onto Public Works, the sign missing at the end of Big Old Hill was not missing on the Nordwalk end. It appears it was missing on the Skowhiggin end. So they went out a couple of days after that, notified Skowhiggin, went into Skowhiggin Public Works to replace that. And we have a backup. Big old hill sign now. The issue with DOT, not to digress or to get negative, but I got two bullets on it. Especially regarding, I don't want to be the guy that gets his temperature taken by Facebook, but it is discouraging for me and my department who's worked diligently and over the top in the last couple of weeks to watch people take it out on them or the town not being cooperative. But every time we called DOT in the last two weeks, we have got nothing or you're, we're out of the area, you need to do it yourself. We can't get there. We don't have money to help you do this. And it's been extremely discouraging. And so we get right down to the river on the silt, we made them aware of it. And they said, we're actually building roads. That was the response that I got was we're actually building roads. So they called me the next day and they said, would you guys might help in this? I said, what do you need? And they, I said, do you need people? Do you need equipment, trucks, what? They said, we'll take whatever you can give us for help. Well, the crew shows up for a full day. And nobody from DOT. They didn't ask us to do it, they asked us to help. Well, we did it for them. Then it came back, there was still an issue after a full day. It wasn't done the way we'd like to have it done. So I called them and said, hey, and they said, you're on your own. So at this point in time, I'm developing a bill using their time cards, whether or not I have a hope of getting it. I'll be submitting it to the commissioner's office and asking them for full reimbursement plus my administrative costs that we put on top. Because that's just not the way that it goes. We've been filling potholes on state routes where the first sand crew to come and hit Waterville Hill coming into town. And if we continue to let the state just roll over us and say, just go take care of it if you can, then they're going to continue to do it. It's only going to get worse and more difficult for us. So I don't want to be that way. We have really, really, really tried to be cooperative. I took a phone call yesterday morning at quarter past five from DOT. Whatever, it is what it is. But you know, we're always the one that seem to try to be moving that cooperation and it just isn't reciprocal. So to residents, I encourage them to go to the DOT website, Google, contact a region main DOT. We're region three and that's a metric that they track and they have to respond to you within twenty four hours. A pothole on state roads applies twenty four hours and they have to repair that pothole or they're exposed to liability. And.
Say it again for the chief seats. It's region three.
The chief seats, it's region three, contact the region name DOT and submit the request. And if it goes unanswered or you see something that's severe or urgent, call the building DOT region three, or you need to call Mr. Hatch. Taking it to Facebook, taking it to the town office. I mean, yes, we can funder it all through, but it's best from the eye, the person that actually saw that damage or sees that issue to have direct communication. But you know, my summary of all of that was I have a deep appreciation for quality intergovernmental cooperation. But only if that relationship is going to be useful. And unfortunately, it hasn't been the last couple of weeks when we need it the most. So anyway, a little frustration there. And then wrap it out on the top side. We were able to secure two new pedestrian crosswalk in road signs from the state, which was an over order by them. And so we'll be able to put those.
When you say inroads, what is inroad? Is that like the button things that go?
No, it's, it's going to go right in the middle of the yellow line.
Okay, alright.
In the middle of crosswalk. Discussion action on January third, general warrant number twenty three.
I moved that the accrued general warrant number twenty three in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty nine cents.
Second, so motion on the second, new discussion.
What is the triple A state of play?
That is the applicable playground.
Okay, alright.
And I have requested a price on the swing set. And I, it was in the ballpark of five to six thousand dollars. But I haven't, didn't think that this was, we don't have the funds in that range to be able to do it. So I'm going to hold first books.
And what did we have to have engineered with Haley Ward?
Haley Ward is handling the file of Royal Road, a management project. So that's all HUD project eventually. We have to pay it.
So only one.
Yeah, what would the HP to beer pill, when you guys get there?
That was, most of it was push and purchase.
Oh, right. Yes, exactly.
What's the thousand for Nickerson Yard maintenance? That's.
That was storm related cleanup. So they came out when DMO came out and they worked, they worked a day, DMO worked two days, helped us do cleanup on roads with debris and whatnot. We'll have one coming from Lou Stu, so we'll pay that and then we'll put that in our fee. Anything else on the discussion? Seeing none, all is fair. Public comment? Mike?
Don't do that the other hand when it comes to the river road as far as, don't they pay you to power anybody's in a country? It's a state aid road. They should be paying you to take care of that without much problem, yes?
So they pay us to plow, but it's a formula based upon program hours now instead of.
So you're with Tom really?
They want to know where we spend that. They send us local road assistance program every year. That local road assistance program.
Right.
You're not finding any river road assistance, the way it used to be twenty years ago.
Okay.
We actually got that stadium.
In the river. What's your role still consist of that as well?
We're big.
Just routine, okay, right. We really don't have any. You're just, you're just going to hope that we are, you're going to build them and see how it goes.
Well, Senator Ferrin is a ranking member of transportation.
It will help, yes.
And it always helps. And if not, then it's something that, at that point in time, I'm able to go to the public, the board and say, look, we've done this and.
Cause there's no reason for them to act like that. I mean, you guys have done, you had enough of your own issues. So you covering me is was certainly not on your list of things to do.
Our local crew is amazing.
They did well.
But they've been pulled away. They're not even reaching. They've been pulled away, higher up the airstorm decision and what they're asking for, they're not even getting. So it's got to be right up the ranks and it's not just us. But it seems to constantly be happening, especially with experiences we're going through last year.
And it began, I mean, that's about.
Oh, yeah.
That's crazy.
You couldn't go through that.
But your local crew had more than enough on that plate. To know that, I mean, I understand the state was all wound as well.
And maybe at the end, it just stopped. Communication, not to not have that back and forth, that we're not just a blank check. Given the problem, but I mean, like he said, it is very much one sided right now and it's been for a little bit. So anything else on public comment?
So Matt.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Ruze, go ahead.
I just was curious, was there damage to the bridge, actual damage? And also there's like a big buildup of debris by the walking, the trail there that should be removed. Does the town handle that or decided the state thing?
It's a state thing. Right now, we've been asked to put stuff together so that it can kind of be rolled into this FEMA relief. So hopefully that portion will get cleaned up with this and then. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The inspection was done supposedly by DOT, but we weren't made aware of it as local officials. So you've heard nothing back on that?
Thank you.
Hopefully, I, hopefully not. I don't know. Jim, go ahead.
So Matt, I got a couple of budget questions. There's a budget line in your agenda. Should I wait for that?
Question?
Yeah, probably, probably.
That's fine.
If it doesn't, make it. Anything else under public comment?
Come on. Speed bumps not going away.
Doesn't seem like it's been there nine years though.
I want to thank you for that, by the way. I really do appreciate.
Didn't seem like it was that long. But anyway.
I said, today it was me, we were.
Having fun.
You know what, Matt? You're one stubborn individual. If you can help, if you can continue to, if you make the right decision.
Very much.
Very much. Even to get the wrong one. In nine years, he's been most significantly involved because.
I know, I know.
Maybe it's like, what a smart, my picture we got.
I know, yes. It was apparent to me. Okay, discussion regarding emergency response purchase. Right, so this is just an extract and I have to get you folks thinking, get ideas if you have any on the table, we tied it ways over the last June. But to get you guys thinking, and I'm going to get with the folks together in the next couple of weeks to try to contribute to this from an on the ground perspective. But we've talked about various things in the past and how they could or couldn't help and the benefit of it. Department needs things like that. So you know, we've talked about those message signs and our trailers. We've talked about homes barricades and signage, which is usually departmental, but obviously we don't have enough. Do you want to get into the shelter end of things that we're locally able to do things like that on a smaller scale? Those are the kind of things that I'm looking to soundboard off of you so that we could review it and take a comprehensive look at our ability to respond across all departments. So that we're able candidly to take care of ourselves and not have to trust other entities to do that. For the folks around the ground trying to communicate about bridge, so transportation, roads, artworks, shelter, you know, emergency management or anything, it was a breakdown at every level between state, county and local. So want to get your ideas. Or maybe your thoughts, you're just opposed to it.
I mean, I think I know for me, this situation that we just had where it came out of nowhere, we didn't really, it was just, it happened, you know. It'd be great if we could rely on the systems that were in place at higher levels, but I think this kind of showed us that unfortunately that you know, when it's happening to so many people, like those resources just stretched, stretched again. So if we have the means, the ability to address that on the local level, I don't know why we wouldn't, just for the mere, just seeing how many trees went down and how many didn't actually go down, but the next time we get a much more mild storm, if we could have another, you know, massive power outage, you know, a lot of those trees are kind of going sideways. And just the thought of how many people, if it happens again in the wintertime, are going to be told without it, you know, any sort of place to go. We were able to go on and go quick. And if we've got the resource and the supplies that they need to make that as easy as we can for those volunteers, I don't know why we wouldn't take that opportunity if there's a funding opportunity for us. That's for, and with like the whole barricade, it sounds like with the, you know, I don't know, but they, you know, the crap show that happened on the bridge, like if we could pass some more, you know, visibility, more barriers and maybe even like we talked about the signs, like if it's announcing like, don't go this way because this is here, like maybe then people, you know, you know, can look at those things and try to better adjust their travel plans and where they're going.
I think on the shelter side of things, I don't think that we have the ability to remove the school in the equation. I mean, it was part of the deal, right? When we did the new school, that was part of the big sell, right? We have it as our you know, our shelter. So I, I just, I, I think it's how do you make that a little more seamless? I mean, do you who's, who has the authority to release it to, right? You know, how is that process just streamlined in an emergency, right? And is there more than one person that you can call and get that permission? I mean, we don't want to step on toes, but at the same time, you want to get it open and ready and in a, in a reasonable.
Yeah, and it would have been a massive thing that happens. Like if you only have one person, they could be flooding themselves and trying to, you know, bail out their, so you know, I, I do agree that there needs to be, you know, an easily accessible way to get what we need in, you know, a time like that for sure.
So I think, I think we're fortunate. We have a pretty good supply of firemen that kept it going, public works. So we fortunate right here, to where we really had everything we needed. So yeah, I don't know. I, I would like to see what an outside person would think that we do need, that we lacking, that we're just all overlooking. Cause yeah, I would say, oh, no, we did a pretty good job as a community to make it happen.
I, I think for me, it's like the communication aspect and like having a a plan so that we can be efficient. And I'm, I'm still kind of the new gal. So I don't, do we have like a formalized emergency response plan? Cause I know a lot of people like stepped up to the plate. Was that their job, like noted somewhere or was that just kind of they jumped to action? What happens when they're out of town? Like how do we efficiently make sure there's food, make sure we have access and all of that without just kind of that like scrambling? Who's around feeling that I'm, I'm sure kind of happened?
So largely when we're in a situation like what we're in, we have a couple of weeks ago, it's county based again. And that's, we have a hazard mitigation plan and it takes a look at if this happens, what happens and what are we doing to earth dam related or storm or whatever. Nuclear, right? It's all in the book. The problem is that you have to have that support home and just like a lot of other things in Somerset County, we get pushed to the edge. And so we don't necessarily get taken care of. There's a school of thought that wants to focus on law enforcement directly and no issue with that, but that's not the whole solution to an emergency, in my opinion. And it's also very Skowhiggin centered. And Skowhiggin has a difficult plan because they've decided to develop an island. We don't, from a Nordwalk representative perspective, I sympathize with that very little when I have people that are living along the river that are affected by it. We're trying to shelter, we're trying to shelter multiple counties and the county was non-responsive. Majority of the people that sheltered here in Nordwalk from Fairfield, because Fairfield didn't have the capacity. So it was really frustrating for me and the volunteers to see these folks check in and not have support. And for the county to say, if you want cots, you're going to have to come down because I'm not urging you to, because I have radio equipment in the back of my car. That's if I have to buy forty cots, I think that's, to me, that's with money well spent so that if we leave them in the next ten years without.
Yeah, I guess.
Both kinds of things. So there's a plan, but that plan is all that convenience and we're always convenience of somebody else. Right. So I think with what Kelsey's getting at is that we develop our own here. That is, you know, whether it's you or Todd, the buyer chief, you know, someone makes that decision of, okay, you know, we are going to open up our shelter. You know, what triggers that? Who makes the call? So that like you're saying, it's not just a handful of people that are like, hey, we should do this and let's make it happen. Try to sort it all out on the fly.
Cause I do think we largely had what we needed. Could there have been more things that would have made it more like hospitable maybe or like easier on some end? Yes. And I would defer to the folks who were like boots on the ground that day, like Laura and the Edwards with like what they experienced actually being at the shelter. But I do think it could be value added to have like a what triggers what and like what's the fire department's role and what's the town manager's role and does the select board have a role? Like I wouldn't have minded like a reach out like, hey, we're trying to figure out this piece. Is anyone available? Like I would have been happy to. And that's also on me. I should have just known to like show up, but yeah.
So I don't know, do we want to agenda something or try to just wait until you can kind of put together an outside source to talk on? Yeah, no, I'm not going to agenda anything right off. I just want to get the discussion formula going. My agenda, we've talked about it briefly in the past. I know that there's interest and there's gaps and so.
Do we know what the county has available through there that we could have had access to if we had a plan in place to say, okay, we know ahead of time, we're going to go get that stuff? So do we even know what's available?
Pretty much nothing except the cots.
Okay.
And they had supposedly positive costs. I asked for sixty, they sent twenty. And then, right. And so they were holding the batteries going, well, they didn't open up an ordinary shelter. They opened up warming and then I had folks that, I had elderly folks that were putting people on the floor because we don't have new cots. So yeah.
I mean, honestly, we got the cots. I'm sure there's other things that we could figure out, whether it's like movie nights in the park. I'm sure that's like something that it's not just going to sit there rotten.
Somerset's a big county, I mean.
Yeah.
You have some where you can't get there. It's nice that it doesn't have to be comfortable, but you, but you may go with this stuff.
Seems like there's opportunity for funding, but and if that's there, like why wouldn't we use? I think that's kind of where I'm at. Like we've had, you know, I just think of unfortunately, the things we've had happen, whether it was like the, you know, one of the corporal coal thing had happened, like in all the influx of, you know, first responders that we had here would have been nice if we had places to set up to give them, you know, like these are things that we hope that we don't have to use, but much like with a lot of our equipment, we hope we don't need it, but like we need to have it in case that one time we do. This seems like it kind of falls in that bucket.
So I'll have to circle back to you and come up with. Okay, discussion action.
Uh, okay, uh, discussion action on appointment confirmation.
Uh, so, uh, Joe Baker, long time public works foreman, uh, announced his retirement. He retired effective September thirty first. Uh, and so with that, uh, I would like to, I have appointed Ryan Grant's public works foreman. Rodney is a resident of Lakeland, resident here of Norwood, who's been in the department. In this current tenure for about eight years now, uh, with a slight split in between when he realized how much he missed us. He was actually my first full-time hire at the department, I think. Yeah, I went up to the edge of the road and I was first on board and I pretty much slumped him down and said, I'm ready to look. Uh, Rodney has been a very strong improvement throughout the department. I think folks enjoy more coming to work, we're productive. Not to say that we haven't been in the past, but you know, we're just really really excelling right now and, and I'm pleased with that. So, um, if you confirm my appointment of Rodney, uh, I have extended Rodney's current job as sub foreman to Willis Libby. Uh, who was also a, a fairly well-known face of our public works and also a resident of Norwood. Uh, which we take pride in employing the folks here in our county area. So, um, my request to you would be to confirm the appointment of Rodney Murray as public works foreman.
Motion to second, any further discussion?
Do you have anything you want to say?
Uh, okay, uh, discussion action on Winslow Community Covered, uh, continuation.
Uh, so I asked Lindsay about this item last week. I don't know if folks saw the newspaper, but these folks are located on West Town Street in Winslow. Uh, and they lost about every visit they headed in locations. Uh, they lost forklifts, which seemed to be like electric issue. They lost iPads and inventory mechanisms, a lot of things like that. They do have their, um, trailer up and ready to go again. This bill is a lot, um, that they put out and we are lacking. So I called Bruce, who's the program director over there and said, hey, what's the situation? That's where I got all the information from. Um, and he said, well, folks have been coming through, they've sold three thousand dollars into their forklift already. They think it's getting back, um, but they're not sure. So I suppose that thing is a monetary, if we were to do something for you. And he said, right now for an organization like ours, it would be monetary. So we did approximately twenty-five hundred dollars earlier in the year to support them with that lift, uh, jack. Um, and so we felt it appropriate to put it to the full board for consideration, uh, of consideration of supporting their operations, uh, related to storm-related losses.
Yeah, I mean, I think that for myself, we've decided that we wanted to support a community covered. And that this was a far more economical solution for us to meet the needs of our, um, you know, people who live here who need that service. They're basically doing something that we need and taking all of their responsibility of having a building and maintaining that. So, I mean, for me, if they need support to get up and get running so they can keep servicing our community members, I, I, what we're able to do and what we've budgeted for that bucket anyways, I don't know why we wouldn't give it to them at this time, like, seems like.
So we don't really have a budgeted bucket for this. My recommendation, if you decided to financially support or purchase something, would be to allocate it from the community food access account. That, that we've had a pretty generous donor, private and then corporate donor too as well.
Yeah, that's, I think that's where I was referring to.
So do you want an up to, do you want just?
I think, no, I don't like it to bind.
Yeah, but does it work reasonably?
I mean, those funds are for that purpose to, I mean, if we have funds that have been allocated to help with the food insecurity here. I don't know why we wouldn't utilize that if they're in, in a need base.
Can, can you remind us how much is in that fund? And how much do we like pay them or offer them money monthly, yearly, anything?
They're very closely related with the on-radiation church in Winslow. And they just, you know, they operate on two strand, they work with the shepherd. So when we asked what they could use the last time, which was earlier in the year, they said we could really use this. So that was about twenty-five hundred dollars that we did at that point in time.
And how much is in that?
I think we've got eleven, we have thirteen thousand, just lost one, but we had thirteen before that purchase, so ten. You can give like a list of items of things that they need.
Why can't you just say, hey, we need thirty-five hundred bucks for this forklift? I just, yeah, it makes it a little easier.
I think that's why you get reached out, right?
Well, right, and I get it, and he's like, well, just, but I think what the fact is, is that their accounts are low. They're a relatively legal organization and they put out three grand of unexpected on forklift and they put out on this and put out on that. Not that it's essential, but, um, you know, I think it was more in the spirit of candidly, from my perspective, I thought of it as, what do we think a reasonable amount is? It shouldn't have been triggered by.
Say you just spend three thousand on forklift, you can we put three thousand dollars in forklift? If you call and say, hey, what do you need, like, wow, I don't know, and say, well, we'll, we'll pay you bills for the forklift, done.
So I don't, that's what you want to do.
I'm more than comfortable with that, that it makes me feel like we're applying it to something. I'm more than comfortable with three thousand.
Yeah, I mean, the money's there for that purpose to make, so that they come here and bring food to our community. So, I mean, whatever we can do, like, you know, I, I do think we need to know, you know, it's not just like, here's random checks. Like, and I get that, we want it to feel like our money went and did this. But in the same sense, what we're really paying for is them coming here and helping out people who live in this town who have that food insecurity. So I mean, like, that is the tangible here, whether they use it on a forklift repair or they use it for iPads. They're basically doing it to run their business to come here and feed our residents.
And all the motion on it, are you comfortable with that?
No, I need motion, okay, motion.
So I move that we allocate up to the amount of what's in that account to help that.
So some more in the second, uh, any further discussion on that? See none, all was in favor, that's everybody. Nice, we thought there was some. Uh, discussion action on preferred vendor application.
We had taken an initial review of this at the last meeting, there were some takeaways and some additions. Uh, one of the things that we wanted to checkbox about the vendor type of data, whether it's supplier or contractor. Um, and then we removed a few other things as well. That folks thought was irrelevant.
Yeah, I like that.
Somewhere to start, then we can all go ahead and tweak it. Last meeting.
So we're looking for a motion to accept this as our new preferred vendor application, um, for the type of North Law.
Welcome to second, uh, any further discussion on that? See not, all was in favor. Okay, discussion action on budget.
Your budget's in the red folder, right? And you have two first pages on the box. You have two first pages on the box on our budget summary and then your revenues. After the last meeting, I was in, we were moving around things and I said in the meeting at the time, I think there was a cell. There was a, I was in terror. That, uh, what we had thought was going to be, um, a relatively flat local budget. It's going to be about five thousand or over there. Ended up driving to a hundred and twenty thousand. Okay, but then we were going to use a hundred thousand extra of surplus to offset. So instead of the five, it's twenty, well, minus twenty-eight, okay? So, I have gone back since, if you look at the second page of revenues. On your host community fees, we had originally looked at eight seventy-five. That was my original proposal to you, use eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of host community fees to offset taxation in revenues. Okay? With the cell correction, I've increased that to nine hundred thousand. So we were at eight seventy-five, I've added another twenty-five in there in my recommendations. So that brings my recommendation to a plus twenty-eight thousand, one fifty-three versus last year. So, the number itself, not huge in terms of a total tax budget. But it's four and a half percent for net to taxes for municipal, just that twenty-eight thousand dollars. So, you can stay at the eight seventy-five and it'll be twenty-five thousand dollars more, right? You'd be looking at fifty-three thousand, uh, uh, nine percent-ish. Or you can match me, or you can use additional host fees, propose using additional host fees to offset. Uh, what are your thoughts on?
So, for me, I, I understand everyone wants, we want to just rely on those host fees. We're not only not going up on our taxes, it's almost giving us this sort of false tax base. God forbid something happened to waste management tomorrow, we can't run the town the way that we're figuring taxes for running this place. At some point, we need to have our taxes go up. I feel like we've not done that at all. And I feel like to keep continually doing that, at some point, there's going to be a breaking point, it's going to have to be a big giant one. I think that a small one here in order to offset this, instead of just relying on the host fees. I think it's something that we should be looking at doing, um, because it's not just we're not going up. It's like with inflation, everything else, it's like we're I don't, I know no one wants anything to go up, but in the same sense, everything is going up and it's.
I guess, I, I understand what you say, I've always, my personal scouting, so we, I laugh above taxes, but then they don't. But I don't necessarily know what going up, but not going, they, I think they just went down, didn't they?
Some did.
Some did, you know, that's the thing is not going, try not to go up, but not, you know, just to stay where we were. Cause I do know my taxes went down, so, um, it wasn't a lot, but it didn't.
Okay, they don't move, it's not just that it's not going up. It's, we're not even keeping up with like the rate of inflation, it, it's like a false like not going up. It's, it's a bigger number than what we're actually.
That's a hard conversation.
It is, but it's also, I, I think that we do have to think like long-term and like, we've been so fortunate as a town to not have to rely and keep upping and upping and upping. But, like I said, I mean, we are completely basing us being able to run this town off of one business entity. That if something happened, we can no longer run this town based on how we're doing it now. So we have to start thinking about that. And if we can chip away at little things, so no one ever is like, oh, I'm not taking that vacation before they share with the kids. Cause our taxes went up and it's like, oh, I didn't even notice that four dollars that it went up. I think that that would be the responsible thing to do. It's a tiny itty-bitty baby step where most towns don't have that luxury, we do. I mean, we're already offsetting that half with that. I, I think that we need to be in the mindset that the town should be able to run itself. And like, it's great that we have that to dip into, but it shouldn't be the only thing we do to offset all of our budget.
With that being said, for me, if we were going to do that, which I'm not saying I'm opposed to, then I think we go back and look at everything we're spending money on. And say, if we're going to live like that or run this town like that, these little things that we've been able to do. We need to go through and pick and start filling a bunch of those things where we're building the town for the future. Um, if, if that's what we were going to do. And, and I don't, I don't think we're there yet.
Right, that's, that's a trade-off, right? They're gonna, like, you're raising taxes, but you're spending money on things, but we don't need.
Because we can do it, we're, we're going to move forward and make the town better for the future.
Ask a couple of questions? When, does like the, we already like voted on this and I get that we made, there was like an error. So now we're getting a chance to like relook at it, correct?
You're going to get to look at it.
Beautiful, okay, so now.
They only cast a handful of votes. When they get their whole picture together, you're going to come back and we're going to learn articles one by one. And that's when you're going to have your final conversation about, do you want to? Do you want to change your recommendation to align with the budget committee? I honestly found upon because it shows something about process to just change the recommendation. But it might change your perspective on what you're willing to put to the voters.
Very cool, okay, um, thank you, let's answer all my questions.
Do you have any perspective on revenues or covering up on that?
Um, I can see both sides, uh, no one likes taxes to go up, obviously. Uh, but I also see the like, kind of like borrowing from ourselves in a way. And we're lucky we're in that situation, I agree with you. If we did want to not rely on the host fees and some of our revenue, I would recommend going back through it with a fine tooth comb, but it sounds like we'll get that opportunity when the budget committee comes back anyway, so.
Okay, so we're left moving, uh, what was, what was it, fifty-three, was that the dollar amount or is it just the twenty-eight?
Well, I've added, the twenty-eight is with me adding an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. So you're going to be about fifty-three up.
Right, fifty-three, right. So you've ultimately got to decide whether we're going to take from those budget fees or we're gonna kick that fifty-three thousand to taxes. So it's what we're kind of be against right here. Uh, fifty-three thousand, the average person is probably about eighty-eight dollars a year.
Is it the fifty-three where your suggestion is actually twenty-five?
Adding twenty-five in revenues from that and that's going to, that's going to represent twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I think twenty-eight thousand is pretty reasonable to, we're looking at a little increase that seems like a a dipping the toe in it, um.
Can you split it?
That was splitting it.
I think that's fair.
And is this today a recommendation to go to the budget committee that then will come back to us again?
Uh, you want to, you have nothing to say on that? No, I don't, I will move in an article down the line, I will change that in the spreadsheet. Charge as a budget committee, but we'll talk about it at the budget committee meeting, because that column lines with mine. And then there'll be twenty on the same issue. Uh, I don't on budget, actually, that was it. Um, budget committee working through their product, hopefully before your next meeting, you're going to have their total feedback. If not, pretty close to it, uh, because if not, we're going to be having a cycle meeting. Because I click a ballot up and part of the ballot signatures on the warrant, part of the warrant is budget. I got an observation and I've got an ask. Governor, as, as a citizen, as part of the budget committee. I'm that conservative guy that tries to sit over here and I sat in D.C.'s for nine years and went through the same problems that you're going through right now. So the observation is, um, as a taxpayer, that, and I don't have these numbers exact. But about two years ago, two and a half years ago, we went from a two million dollar budget to almost a three million dollar budget. Most of that driven by highway and personnel costs. We need to maintain decent personnel, we have to retain the people that we have, the talented people that we have. We have to pay them a decent wage, I have absolutely no problem with that whatsoever. We kind of bogged down a little bit, we started with administration was our first budget we looked at and two hours later. So, um, and I'll use that just as an example. But the driving budgets in this cycle are the personnel budgets, the highway, the administration and the fire department. So with administration, we looked at twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-two line. And if you look at that two-year cycle, we're bumping about fifty thousand dollars a year. Okay, and the example that I used at our meeting last night was, it's a four-person, a five-person department. Um, most of these increases are bumped by personnel costs. So if we continue this trend, um, we're going to be at a million dollars in eight and a half years for this budget, if we continue this trend. And we may not, there may be some bumps and some. So I want the board just to be looking, and this is just administration, this isn't fire, this isn't highway. Um, a lot of the budgets are pretty much standard set fee. It's a, it's more of a caution as we move forward that there may be some of these things that we can't afford. Hope we can, we're so blessed to have waste management out here. We have a TIF that's going to be depreciating as the value of those assets go down. So that TIF fund is going to start reducing at some point. Um, again, you're lucky to have this group out here, but, you know, I don't want to be sitting. You know, I don't want to be sitting here eight years and I'll be back every year, so thank you for that, but. I don't want to be sitting here eight years from now with a million dollar administrative budget, with a five million dollar fire budget. Because at that point, we've outgrown even those phases from waste management, we've outgrown our potential income considerably. If we keep going in the direction we're going, so that's my observation. My ask would be, um, we talked about last night, we talked about social services, um, social services.
Local philanthropy.
Thank you, appreciate, that's a lot more classic, I like that, so local philanthropy. Um. And and I understand the process, I understand the deadlines that Richard is up against. Um, we had a December. Eight, whatever, deadline for anyone wanting money through that fund to request that money. So it could be in some type of budget format. You could look at it, you could make a decision that, hey, we've got, uh, eight thousand dollars worth of requests, do we want to approve eight thousand, do we want to? And again, I understand trying to be the administrator behind that. But right now, we've got about sixty-three hundred dollars or less, sixty-three maybe, um. Perhaps other requests going out to see, hey, you need something and and we're in a budget right now that's inflated. So my ask to you would be. A more clear process for Richard to follow to say. By September, by October first, if you want money in this account, you request it. And you get whatever you need for documentation, which is great, and then when you as a select board. And when we as a budget committee look at that, we can get down through and we can say, the Masons want a hundred, you know. The Christmas decoration committee wants two hundred, we're gonna approve fifty-five hundred dollars, I don't think in our current budget situation, we should be. Going out and requesting people to submit when they've already been asked. If if that's how it works, you guys can have a more in-depth discussion about this, but. Um, it's confusing, the other thing that we ran into last night was, um, there was a request from the brain, which over half of the committee on the budget committees were bringing, so. That's kind of a conflict, so you're gonna have to deal with that, and when you look at that, if you're still on the board, whoever, I think most of you will be. I'll probably come back and talk to that, but. Um, yeah, I'd just like to see a set number, you want the money, you ask for the money, and then we get a chance to look at that and say, you requested it, we think you're worthy, we're gonna give it to you. And not, you know, an amount up to, so that's one of the conflicts that we had. Um, between your recommendation and the budget committee, there are gonna be a couple more, and I think, as Richard mentioned, it's a healthy process. Um, it evokes discussion. I think by us going in, not to be confrontational, but for us to go into a town meeting and and everybody's on the exact same line. There's no conversation, there's no discussion, you're lucky to get people out of their house, um, on that evening. You know, you get fifty, sixty people and it's check the box and, oh, my taxes went up and then they're pissed, so anyway. Appreciate your time as we go through this process and we'll wrap it up, so, thank you.
I mean, I don't disagree, on it, like, I I think that we, if we move forward, keeping that local philanthropy piece, I I do think you're, we should have like. A time to straighten for it, honestly, I don't think anything gets argued about more at the town meeting than where the local philanthropy money goes. And to be completely honest, that has always been one of those categories where my. For me, it creates so much debate, so much heart, it's such a small amount of money, but in the same sense, like, it's just like. If it is more time spent by the budget committee, by this committee and a town meeting over that, like seven thousand dollars, like. I would be fine making a motion to eliminate that completely from the town, it shouldn't be a town thing, I think that that is a. It's philanthropy, we're not, we're a town, we're not, we're not individual people, like, I. I would be more than fine putting forth a motion to eliminate that from our budget, we can take that eight thousand dollars away from that twenty-five thousand dollars we have to doing, now guess what? I bumped this down to three percent, yes, easy.
Oh, and there was. And there was a second, uh, right, uh, any discussion on that, uh, I mean, I I would, uh, motion on that, that like, uh, I'd say that budget committee is gonna look like the expenses now. But we get a chance to readdress that. Eliminated in that, so you've got like, you've got like the range, you know, that's gonna come and ask money from that account, I mean, I think we also provide for the historical society out of that account. And it's. Not that she was about here. You got the Christmas lighting.
Have ways to build, build, like, things like that.
That's, that would be my next thing, we have an avenue of filling in when. Right, you just keep pulling, right, so. So, uh, yes, there's a motion to the second, uh.
Dylan's going to the bathroom.
I I I do like the idea of getting away with it, however, we we did just like accept people's. Asks for money, um.
Except for, but we didn't say.
Correct, but so how many, like, how many people have asked for money so far, about how much is it? Cause maybe this time we do what Peter's suggesting, it's a process that like.
Yeah.
So this, I mean, the process isn't perfect, it never will be, but we've always known that about it, so I'll start with that comment, the first, the second is that. I reach out to the folks that we've donated to in the past and ask them to submit their request, so I can prepare a budget at the time of the manner. But that's never been limiting, because we always have folks, you folks directed me two years ago now. To reach out to anybody that we're. Given to and send them and then give them a little amount of time to come back and make that formal final request under the process, anyway.
We're over budget this year, though, so.
Yeah, so you've got the bike, the bikes for books, that's the Lebanon's, the Lebanon law, they do that for the kids at the school. You've got name public seeking a hundred and fifty dollars this year, the sportsman's association two thousand, the, uh, Christmas program, more of a Christmas program is seeking a thousand. The Grange one thousand five hundred, spectrum generations, they have wheels on the wheels primarily. Area agency for the L, uh, area agency on agent eight hundred eighty-four dollars and ten cents, the lifeline foundation is. Eight hundred nineteen dollars and fifty cents, and candidate behavioral health is asking for one hundred dollars. Those sixty-six fifty-three so far.
So I I think that a lot of the things that maybe if we find, you know, moving forward as a board, that it's like, it's a muster, we really feel like we need to do this, we have to continue to see, but. A lot of the things that you just listed off, boy, what great things for like businesses to sponsor and different things like that, I know that we have several in town that. Go above and beyond all the time, and if there was an ask for something like that, I don't think that the answer would be no, so. I feel like we're not leaving any organizations out in the lurch, but we're also eliminating an entire giant headache that we've had for years by getting rid of this and. Still can meet the needs of things if we absolutely have to, but these aren't taxpayer responsibilities, it's neato, nice to have and. We're over budget, it causes headaches, a lot of heartburn for people, hey. I'm still in the boat of get rid of it, I think it's always been like a bad idea.
Well, we sent a discussion, uh, and again, uh, and any of those, like the Masons and stuff, we could fund right out of, uh, contingency.
I mean, I'll write it, that's fine, like, it's.
That's not that you can do that, I don't know, off of that, I'm sorry personally, but, um. Yeah, no, uh, right, so there's a motion second, uh, any further discussion on that, uh, so, yes, uh, no discussion.
What was the motion again?
To do away with the.
We've had that discussion so many times about, we we set the deadline, if they don't set it in, and then we up it to give contingency money or extra money in there in case people ask after the fact. I mean, I, when, I think what Jim's saying is, if there's a date by October first, if that stuff's not in. We don't budget for it, you don't get it next year, next year, put in for it.
Uh, it's just good to have a fixed number, when you're looking at a budget, sixty-six hundred dollars, if that's, you know, the budget, great, that's the budget. Not up to eight or ten thousand, with it, with us a deadline, at least with us a deadline, so.
My thought on that is, that's been an issue, Scott, even it used to be the same way. People wouldn't put in, then come after, they wouldn't show up, tell me to justify why they needed it, even when asked. Um, the people that have put in, I think they're good things, you know, the meals on, all those things, we have people in the community using it. I think personally, we should fund that, if they're going through and putting the number there like we asked. I say we fund the number that's there. Um, and then next year, if you didn't get it this year, you'll get your paperwork in next year on time, hopefully. Um, and then we can take that into account in the future, that's, that's my thought on it.
Right, kind of follows suit with you, uh, but again, knowing that there's other avenues to cover the extremely local and, uh. The items that may not be funded if we do away with this, uh. So, yeah, but I I think I would like to see this stay, but, uh.
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot.
He's gonna stay on your review, Laura.
Uh, yeah, uh.
I just wanted to say, there was plenty of time given, I think that letter was probably sixty days, Richard, right? When I had an October.
When I was saying, I might send the budget request on.
So in the past, just because an agency has asked for this and the request isn't on time, isn't a guarantee. That is going to be funded, but you can at least budget up to that amount in case you do fund that a hundred percent, so that's historically, I think that's how we've done that.
Until about eight years ago, that's, you funded everything that came in.
With with an adjustment.
And, no, then it was nice to meet you. And I came in and fundamentally defunded three quarters of these organizations.
There was always a discussion, this is the ask, this is what I, this is what I recommend, if we discuss and disagree, it was like.
The children's center, which is based in Bangor, things like that, if you got a letter, they were getting something, and there was a nice sizable chart in the town reports, and I'm like. What did it impact on people in Northside, I buy a responsive explanation.
Right.
And I pulled them out, and I can tell you that a lot of the folks that still request, that still request. We ask for financials, we ask for how do the financials and most, nobody gives them to us, so.
I think I'm in favor of this year, like, I would love to look at the requests we've gotten. Look at those, propose a number for this year, and I would welcome, uh, next year for twenty twenty-five budget, not having local philanthropy as a line item.
All right, well, we've got a motion on the floor right now.
I know, I'm just saying, so I'm a Novo, but that, I'm going forward, that's what I would think.
What I want to make your hear, it's, it is philanthropy, when you think about that, it's when you as like a private citizen do something philanthropic, you do something, you make a donation, you do that, and there is like the added tax benefit of doing that. We're right now giving away field of money with taxpayer money and we're over budget, so like, I think that this. There's times when when things are flushed by all means, if we've got extra, give it up, we don't have extra and like just waiting and trying to see who can ask us for a little extra, now we're asking taxpayers, be like. And we're not gonna get people all to agree on the individual organizations, not that any one of them is more deserving, less deserving or anything like that, but now. We're taking non-necessary things for the town and now we're giving away money while we're also over budget, I think that. That is a lovely idea and philosophy to have, but it shouldn't be a line item for our budget, and we have contingency, we have. An exact thing that we can do at this time, but we, we're out of money, so. Sorry, I'd love to help you, but I'm guessing the useful thing that we have to pay out and we can't stop paying, you probably get money from that too, so like, it's not, at the end of the day, our responsibility, it's cool if we can do it, but like. It's not a taxpayers' responsibility or burden to have to do that, it's just, wow.
All valid, all valid, uh, and it really is where you fall on the idea behind the account, uh, so, all right, I I don't. Right, uh, so we've had a discussion, is there any further discussion amongst that board right here, uh? Motion on the table right now is to do away with the, uh, philanthropy account, uh, so all those in favor of doing away with the philanthropy account? Okay, uh, so the motion will fail. I don't know, that leaves us, um.
I would.
In place, you know, this and that, right, and I, so it will carry us, and I, as for the board, I mean, with the different perspectives we have here, we certainly want to. Go back and look at that for our name, I mean, for about a world here next year, uh.
Next. We've still got time to address that anyway.
Yeah, next time we look at the budget, can we have that list of who's asked and and what they're asking for and.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's on your chart, we've never really, well, we haven't, we haven't looked at the organizational requests until the budget gets approved. Because then it's difficult, and then you're in the process of picking organizations, which is why we're in the system that we're in now.
And you want to change the vote again, like.
And candidly, we got, so. It used to be that organizations at town meetings would get pitted against, so then it, let's just allocate this amount of money. The good chief over here, Wild Hill, said, there's too much involved with it, put a budget through, take their requests, the select boards. Popularly elected and trust them to make the decision. And so that's kind of how it's gone, and that removes the politics of organizations from town meeting. Which worked for two, maybe three years. But we digressed last night at budget committee for a half an hour.
I get what you're saying.
Theoretically pitting organizations against others, or just saying, no, I want to exclude that organization, that's when we came on numbers, so. We thought we had a system that worked, everyone to discuss about organizations. But at the end of the day, the prevailing mo, was there prevailing motion or a sentiment?
We made a motion for a reduced amount.
Okay, so there was a prevailing motion that was largely based upon a removal of the second organization. An organization was discussed, well, if we removed that, then we could cover this and we could cover that, so we're right back into it, it's just a quieter process, whether that's right or not.
Right, that's really all.
It's definitely right for the benefit of the organizations, but it's not right for the process. So that's what's difficult about this.
Got it.
It's completely personal.
Right, it's a positive.
That's why it shouldn't be like a town that will give, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make, it is personal.
You're right, you're.
It's not our business, like, it's.
So I mean, it essentially needs to set the way it sets right now, uh, for for this budget season. I just don't, not to interrupt you. Like, tell him he says you have ten grand and then like, well, you've got eight grand, and then you start giving money away, I, that's what I. Well, especially if it's up to, which should make it a little more palatable for the budget, because it's up to ten grand, it's not like all of a sudden we spend thirty. Uh, so it's, you're always saying, but in that, so. And you have ten, and it's kind of like, well, we'll give them more money, I, I don't know.
Yeah, this tax is going up, why would we care?
Well, right, that, and that's the flip side of that, is you're gonna raise the taxes and then. Giving money, I.
That is.
That's a hard, that's a hard sell.
That is.
All right, we have to do anything else.
So, I'm sorry, I started the conversation, I do apologize, the only reason for me personally that the budget committee recommended a lower amount than you had recommended is because. We looked at what was being asked, what we could cover for then asked, and we reduced it by two thousand dollars. And we looked at one organization we'd never heard from before, we don't know anything about the organization, it's not a local organization that probably benefits us a little bit, we can look at that again, but. If, I just, as you mentioned, we tighten on a budget, why expend more money than is asked for something? With the hope that somebody may apply for it in the future, and if somebody applies for it in the future, you want to go on designated, that's completely up to you, I mean, that's a tool you can use, but. In this line for this year and the next year, do away with it, we won't have this discussion again, go.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great, I'm gonna get the board on this. Uh, you've got anything else to put on? Okay, other witnesses, the board have anything for other business?
No, I.
You have any support?
Yes.
I do too, sorry, I can talk about the business, I don't, I don't, I don't. Um, can I say another business?
Uh, yes, you can.
Um. The survey that went out from the TIF, and it sounds like another survey is going to go out, do we have a way to provide that to people who don't like online things?
Sure, sure. I usually bring it up, and I take it away, and that's because somebody else put the phone on, they're at the front counter.
Thank you, and then where are we at with the text program? The like, uh, texting, I forget what it's called.
Well, we wrote it down tonight and I emailed them yesterday to say when's my appointment.
Perfect, thank you.
Always a wonderful time to drive and draw, but I've been hitting the exclamation point of a couple of things, so I want to get one.
All caps.
Uh, that's louder.
So I have a one that I should have included in my town manager's report, I did not, and that is your, uh, paper nomination papers closed today, so. Kind of giving, giving you an idea as to where we set, the select board has five candidates, not all incumbent. For five positions, there was one person that drew papers, did not turn them back in. Your tax assessment board, three incumbents, three sets of papers returned. Budget committee, I have two sets of papers returned for three terms, so there'd be a writing candidate there. The school board, I have two open seats with zero people running. That's your tax bill, folks, I mean, I have no representation. Uh, the library trustee is one vacancy, one person has, uh, submitted their papers, and the sewer commission has three vacancies and no. Uh the library trustee is one vacancy, one person has uh submitted their papers, and the sewer commission has three vacancies and no candidates on the ballot. So if we don't get at least one, we won't be able to have a war. Uh sadly, where we're at with the way that the ballot is shaking up in addition to the two represented questions we stated today. Uh the other thing before I forget is if I could have somebody make a motion to add discussion action on acquaintance to the agenda, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, for the discussion, seeing none, those in favor, it's everybody.
You. Uh this part item, I am going to actually turn over to Ryan Dickford, trustee chair of the water district, please.
Thanks. Uh so as you guys know, Todd served on the Nordwark Water District Board of Trustees for twenty years. And Tom, for all your hard work, he is retiring. Or moving on to bigger and better things, yes. Yes. Um so we are a short trustee after February meeting. Uh Fred Marshall, I talked to him. He's interested in joining us on the Board of Trustees for the Nordwark Water District. Greg, I'm sure you guys all know I'm a lot of experience municipalities. So I I wrote you all a letter and requested you appoint him. Um you guys appoint the trustee of the Nordwark Water District, so. I'd like to see.
Not if I could, with the clarification that the appointment would be effective upon the adjournment of the first trustee meeting in February twenty twenty four and running through April of twenty twenty six.
Thank you.
Hmm, so uh.
So would. Yeah, that's all. Motion on the second, uh any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, that is everyone.
Uh under the same item of business, if we could continue, with the new fire chief comes the need to uh review fire warden deputies, so that would be fire wardens. Um I had, I think that actually, and then we'll pack it and all yours. I did. So uh if we could authorize the town manager to confirm the appointments of Todd Pino as fire warden, Daryl Wyman, Andrew Dexter, and Kyle Mullin as deputy fire warden. So.
Second. Motion on the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? So.
Uh next, please, if we could get somebody to add discussion action on Ashley J. Wing family memorial park cleanup.
So, second motion on the second, uh any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's everyone.
All right, so you folks have seen an email uh from Brian Luce, who's the contractor uh working on the basement building, that project out on Martin Street Road. Uh he called me the day of the storm at one o'clock. He said, it's one o'clock, the anniversary is now already. Uh we, the building itself was unstable, so that's a blessing. Uh he had offered to take care of all the things that are out there, and I've taken him up on that under the emergency appropriations and and the fact that we should be able to get that paperwork to fee. Nonetheless, it needs to be done, and he's got the equipment, probably with another partner, uh contractor, to be able to get rid of the debris. So that we're understanding on that. But the two things I need to bring to you tonight, the first one has to do with getting it cleaned up. And the first paragraph was emailed to me for this, they should all be removed to prevent the building from getting squashed.
That was actually his term port to a squashing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think he has appropriate experience to understand this. He has no state of desire to cut any other trees and to see them gone, but honestly, they should all be removed. Above my pay grade, folks. Maybe not, but I'm coming to you for clearance.
So, you know, for me, I know that there's a lot of discussion about the amount of trees that we already need to remove, and that was a lot of hard work for people. We were planting quite more than twice as many trees, bringing that were removed. I think when we make it a safety issue, which it technically is, and a retention of assets that we're investing in, I think we have to, and I think maybe we just look at we've got the post budget here for cleanup, but maybe we need to add more for more installing of trees to replace those. That's where, I mean, like, I don't want to spend more money, but in the same sense, like it's a safety thing and affecting our investment, but let's add some more trees.
My. She's right, Platinum. I mean.
Did my just say I was right? Never forgot that.
They said it really quietly, though.
Oh, I say it again.
But I think that, you know, when we first did this last year, it was just a grooming, the big ones out, and we we had to do it properly, but when you have a stand of trees like those pine, and you sit them out, they grow together for a hundred years, and you take out half of them, and you have what happens there. And it's not, Brian is right, it's gonna continue to happen now that they're open up.
More so.
And yes, every time it happens, it's gonna get more frequent. So it's just like when you build a house and you you have a person say, I want to see that tree and all this stuff. Well, let's say you know it's too close to the house, have the entry. Pick one way you want it, and you can have a better scenario. I I I I don't think it should be. I understand there are people who are gonna say, well, we don't, we we need to save trees. I get that. But I think that we've got a pretty good financial investment because of what I did, and I don't think those trees are gonna help. It's gonna cost us money if we don't take him up on the offer. If it comes down in inopportune times or if it's still these, they will cost you a lot more money per tree to take care of them on an individual basis. Yeah, okay, anything. So I I I think that it is the time, and if he's there, it's a feasible request. Yeah, plant some more trees.
Yeah.
And then cut them down again.
Right.
I find that it's just frustrating that we had a place where the building could have gone where the trees weren't. But we can.
And that's a that's a viable point. I mean, that's back, that's.
I know, I just.
So.
I know. All right, I make a motion to cut the trees.
Yes. Well, great with that, too.
I feel like Mike was looking at me that whole time. Yeah.
Does this include the big one that's out here?
You just say opposite, so.
So, yeah.
It's like, it was before the storm that it was like.
More.
Yeah. Oh, God, yeah, it's it's not.
It's just out. Uh so there's a motion on the second.
But I feel like that's not the ver- verbiage you actually need. Uh huh, or is it? The motion.
I I heard they.
Second with that, as far as discussion, my only thing with the is, are we going to come back later with an additional budget for replanting, or do we want to do that now?
I I think that'll be.
I would back to see what it looks like, what more we cut down before we figure out what we're doing.
Now, when you do this on this, I'm removing trees. This doesn't mean de-stumping and that is that part of the removal of the trees? I mean, you just want to be a little clearer on this, because the tree's gonna come down. Now you're gonna have
Right.
You're gonna have to de-stump, and I think that's gonna have to be a separate issue with this.
Just say this item before I voice for, ask the opinion and after a woman member does the work, I'll be staying. Just just because I've been involved.
Right, right. And I'm just asking what's gonna be clear for.
Doesn't.
The stump's doing. Where you need to come.
Oh, yeah, right, but as for what what's gonna take place is, I'm just, someone's gonna come back to you with a, I mean, I'm just saying.
To what extent?
When you, when you, when you see this, when all the trees are gone, it's going pretty luckily with the stump saying, somebody's gonna want to stump it. So I mean, you just have to be clear that what he's responsible for. This, because it's gonna, this will come back to you. You watch and see.
We'll just plant a new tree in front of them. We'll be fine.
These are three foot stumps.
These are big.
Oh, so you can have a picnic on.
And set up a little bar, more tables.
Yeah.
I too, but it's not like part of this price that you.
Yes, I I think that'll keep you in some.
Yeah.
No price here.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, so does the board want to see it? So.
It's not.
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
Because it's not like.
I don't think so either.
I'm. It's a parking lot. It will look nicer.
It's a parking lot.
And that is an area where we're trying to attract people.
Stumping, dumping is very big, because those are huge stumps. So you install a huge stump, you have a home.
I didn't take them off in our yard. I'm saying.
It's a night, I didn't even start the discussion. I just think that when the trees are all gone, it's gonna.
So there really is no public foot traffic out in that area. Uh that's the area where the rumor will be coming up and turning around. Uh the sportings club may have some equipment outside there, uh but for all intents and purposes, there'll be no foot traffic, no snowmobile traffic, no. Uh I don't know exactly. I'm gonna say there's probably fifteen trees uh in in that area back there.
I walk by with my dogs and see a nice big building and then just a bunch of large doors.
Tempers.
Right, well, yeah.
You know, this is probably gonna come to another project in the future.
Right, there's only replanting in the spring, was we.
So they will get some eventually?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see a need for that to be so.
What do you mean?
Because in the future, we're gonna replant, do other things to fill that back in.
That same area?
Kind of make it so you can't see in there, because it's the clothes area or to keep uh.
It's not hard.
The replantings will direct you so that you're not driving over into the club side uh. You know, keeping you out of areas you're not supposed to be. So I think a lot of this stump stuff will be hidden uh as long as they're cut flush with the ground, they're not left out.
As long as it's not appearing.
Those are the big trees. You can't cut those flush with the ground.
Oh.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have stumps that can choose to be.
You're gonna have to readdress this just for our own, you will, you will readdress it, address this at some later point, because you have, you've got an area out there that is a very aesthetic, it's aesthetically pleasing, or that was the whole goal. And when you do this, they need to come down. But you're gonna have to address this issue, because it's gonna be going from, if you put in a couple trees to, it it's not gonna make it buffer so that people don't look at this goal.
Yeah.
You you you're trying to make something that is a positive, and without addressing that issue, it's not gonna be positive. It's gotta look like a bomb, yeah. And I don't need to keep interrupting, but I mean, I just.
You're abstaining. You're refusing yourself.
Yes.
So the board has standards very clear in the record orders like that.
Right.
You're a professional in this area. What would you advise the board look at doing in order to resolve this?
So they're big trees, it's a lot of big trees. You can't just cut and flush the ground. They're the the stump at the ground is almost twice what it is three feet up on the front. So you you're gonna have two, three, you're gonna have a stump that big. So you can't plant around stumps. You can, it's just you'll create woods again. And if that's your intent, fine. Um if you want some sort of parky area, you are going to want to do something with the stumps down the road. Um whether you pull them um is an option, uh but then you also have groundwork affect that, because there are huge, some of those stumps are huge. Uh fortunately, you know, or you wait on replanting a year or two, you do something with them, once they decayed a little bit, a little bit easier to work with. Um, you know, I I think it's a time thing. I think that trees need to come down. And you know, and then you finish the building, a year or two down the road, you reassess. Anything down the road with pine stumps is less money. The the longer they sit, the more they rot, the easier they are.
Thank you. So, so my two cents.
Yeah, and it's not supposed to be a park there. That is, it's a parking lot that's next to a trail. It's not part of the thing down in, so I mean, I don't think we need to get fancy or do anything else right now. I think we approve what the engineer is doing it, said it first.
Wasn't there discussion on pick the tables and stuff like that being provided there for the parking rights originally?
Possibly.
So, yes, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Looking at it, there was proper about putting like a nice sign there.
Yeah.
I feel like it is gonna be.
Originally on, on on the original thought process on that, was that it was gonna be not only just a place for people apart, but people that are riding the trail from Auckland to Bingham or whatever, more we want to provide a place where they didn't have to stop at a store and, you know, they like stop and have a, it was gonna be like, like you just said, the rest area, tight deal with some picnic tables, and that's yes, the trees need to go, it would have been cool, could have kept them, but when they start to go down, it is a safety issue, all go. But when you do that, you're gonna hinder the original thought process on. So my thoughts are, we get the trees down.
Yeah, figure it out.
This isn't, we don't need to do this all, you know, right now. We've got, make this a five year project or whatever we come up with, and actually go the next, over the next five years. That way we're not spending more money now to, so that's just my thoughts.
Right now is to have a cut down uh right, move the second, it's so right, unless there's any other discussion. All those in favor? Okay. Suppose uh we're abstaining, break a second. Anything else? Yeah.
Uh uh discussion action on Ashlowing family memorial park electrical project added to the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second, uh motion on the second, I for any discussion, those in favor?
So board signed contract with NF Luce uh to construct the building and take care of all of the meandering wires and whatnot, uh running things underground. What was not accounted for in that price and discussion was setting a pole um as the base to get what we needed to out. Um and we have to have a pole set on the property. The private value of that from six, who was supposedly the least expensive person around with the power pole and all associated hardware, is sixty two ninety one. So I'm not sure what the board would like to do. But it's above my.
Quite on that, sixteen. I know there was some conversation about the bids and all that stuff. Did you know that wasn't?
Part of that anyways.
It wasn't in any of this. So this isn't a surprise to you then?
Hmm.
This isn't a surprise to you?
I mean, yeah, it is, because I don't know enough about it, which is the issue with, you know, trying to avoid engineers, but avoiding engineers.
Right.
It's that happy.
And this is like, I mean, you can't not have the, this is to get electrical to it? Is that what we're?
Right. It's a step, hold the pole, yeah, when the line and the pole that goes to what Brian put in there.
And then how how much more are we looking to spend on the other stuff? I know that puts us closer to the how much was approved by us in TIF, and then this is getting close to that, and then what else?
We're over, right?
Not yet, but it's.
I think we're over the thousand or two thousand dollars of the original uh.
I know, can I pull it up?
If you have.
I know you did.
Say that we don't have anything else left to come out of that pot of money after this overage. I corrected that.
Well, this is this is surveillance, which is a couple, Brian, for the equipment installation. And the light fixtures, the light fixtures, the lights fixtures, we intentionally excluded those uh because we wanted to be able to pick the types of fixtures.
Right.
So that they could be.
Totally.
Does anyone remember what the amount was that we approved total?
A hundred and. Thirty, thirty seven, five.
Yes, we're only seven thousand away with this increase. So how much do we think that other stuff is gonna cost? Uh.
It's gonna be.
Like parking lot lighting fixtures, surveillance.
And I might be able to get a grid, help cover some elements. That's what we did for still part, that was covered.
Right. I mean.
And it goes.
Yeah.
Those, yeah, that parking lot lights, pictures are gonna be.
Everything's expensive. What do the parking lot light fixtures go on?
Poles. Like tele poles.
More poles. Okay.
Yeah.
Just this one wasn't included?
Yeah. All right, holes, that's a hole sign. There's no fighting, exactly, exactly, you know.
And honestly, it's still like.
Wonder.
Well, I mean, some of the things that we got for the building coming in are, we're still printing, I mean, for a municipal building of that size there, like, I still feel really comfortable with the way the market is right now. We're spending a hundred thirty seven thousand, like, yeah, we're still, it still seems like a bargain at this point. Um, yeah.
Uh right, so a motion to approve.
Uh so moved.
Second, you need a dollar attached to that. So I'd rate the change, running the amount of up to sixty two ninety one? That's what I heard, I accept it.
Yes.
Uh there's a motion on the second, uh any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone. That's all I have. Okay, uh.
So then I move to a yard?
Yeah. I'm voting on the second, uh for German, uh any just. Seeing none, all.